If that won't be here to shut it off, so you show up there and how do we know?
How did the button?
Yeah.
You can do that? I think I can do that. Go home, take care of yourself.
Yeah, well, I have recorded.
Is she seated?
Yes, she's sitting with us.
Oh, good.
Pledge allegiance and say what?
She got it. She got it. Did she hit the button?
Yes. I put in the following order, please rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, an interior republic for which it stands foundation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And for this statement, I would suggest there is not, because there's nobody here. Purpose of this is to discuss possible town meeting article requests, given that we have a town meeting coming up in November. Would somebody care to open up any discussion on this? We do have in place of Dr. Colley, Anne Dargan has agreed to join us and give us any input or feedback if we have any questions as well from the district side.
Would you like to open up? I can start since, basically, my understanding is that the finance committee was requesting that by October 9th, any proposed articles that were going to be suggested to be on the special town meeting warrant would be presented to them by that day. That was their deadline so that they could meet their requirements. Our next meeting was normally scheduled to be October 10th, so I thought that it was prudent for us to meet prior to the deadline of the 9th to discuss whether we were thinking about putting some article forward. I know that there were some additional monies that were freed up and provided to the town from the state that weren't accounted for in the original town warrant. I know that the Board of Selectment has made some suggestion as to what was going to occur with those monies. Some of it was going to go to veterans line item because that was when the override did not pass. That was shorted a substantial amount of money, a hundred and change, I think is what they were thinking. And don't quote me on the numbers, I'm just going strictly with the number. In addition, they were looking to augment the snow and ice budget because it's every year comes in under what the actual expenditures are. And my concern was that all of those monies were now being redirected to the town side of the budget, that there wasn't any specific allocations towards the school side of the budget, and that we should have a discussion as to whether there was anything that we wanted to request from some of those monies. I don't think all of them were allocated. My understanding is that there was a small piece still left. I don't remember what that number was. I don't think they allocated all of it. I know originally, one of the initial proposals that were put forward was that those monies would be used to fund the contractual obligations that were not funded by the loss of the override. Our piece of contractual obligation on our side of the budget, I think, are 113.
114, I think.
Change something to that effect. I understand that the Board of Selectmen have decided that's not the road they want to travel. I don't think that precludes us from having that discussion and deciding whether we want to seek some portion of the contractual obligations that we continue to have to pay in order to backfill some of that 675 that we were forced to cut as a result of the overrides not going forward.
I never heard from the principal of middle school last week about needing a math specialist over at the middle school. And with the MCAS scores as they were, I think if we are going to request his money, I hate to add another person to the budget, but I mean if it's, it's one way to get those math scores up.
My concern with adding with this money is...
We own it for next year.
That's right. That's my only, I agree with you. Because we do need something, but that is, my only concern is adding to something with money that is here for one year and the next year we're working with the budget. Anything else on what Carolyn has said?
I don't know. I don't think we have the, I think the Selectmen made it clear that they don't want to divvy that out. They want to use it for snow and ice, they want to use it for the veterans, and lots of other homes.
Well, we do have the 20, we do have the 30,000 or so going from middle school to the interests, so that is on a warrant article.
Yeah, they are, they are, well, the plan is for the town to pay for that.
Right. Even though I don't, I don't consider that a school item so much, but it is there.
So my concern is that we just don't have the support of the Selectmen or the finance committee.
Well, I mean, the article would be on town meeting floor, and what support we would need is from the town meeting members. Just because the Board of Selectmen does not believe that they want to shift monies to the schools doesn't mean town meeting members would not possibly be of a different opinion. They are not the end-all-be-all decision makers. I apologize for saying that, but they're not. We as a school committee are obligated to deal with our budgeting issues. They have certain things that they can say and state, but if we go to town meeting and town meeting votes to approve an article that the school committee sponsors, then that's what happens, whether the Board of Selectmen agree or not. I'm sorry. That's not their final decision.
Tony?
Dr. Dargan, what are the chances of finding a math, well, I guess for the fifth or sixth grade, it's elementary certification, someone who could do math and maybe Spanish or Portuguese or some other French, some other foreign language and do a point five of each, if that is possible? What are the chances of that?
The dual certification may be a little bit more difficult, however, finding two people each part-time, we are coming up now to a time when many of our college students miss graduation in the spring and will be graduating in December. And so there's a likelihood that we will be able to find someone who's newly graduated, newly certified, to fill some of these roles.
Now, aside from what Erica mentioned, the math specialist, looking at what the district needs are, what are we, what are the highest priorities at this point?
I was asked, just a priority list, to put together for you, just in the event that you wanted to have a discussion.
Just in case, I mean, how do we know?
Oh, good.
Well, I asked her to just put something together so we know what we're looking at.
So I did check with all of the department heads in the school department. I checked with Mrs. Willis, Mrs. Harp, the building administrators, and as well as Mrs. Leib. And this is a shortlist. There's a lot more things at this point in time that we could actually add to this. In fact, what's missing on the list is Mrs. Toodle, who's out of the district, which he emailed me at the 11th hour and said the high school could really use a math coach too as well. And by the way, we really could use a new driveway. So in looking at the Chromebooks, you know, at first we were trying to really look at the sustainability and where can we get the biggest bank for our Chromebooks that...
Those are the new ones that you used in the last meeting, right?
Yes. And those are the ones that are, that all of fifth grade are using it twice a week to get onto the Achieve 3000, the reading program. We hope now we have enough licenses to have the fourth grade be able to work with Achieve 3000. At this point in time, they would go into the computer lab, but again, because we have just, you know, limited resources, I wish that we would have, would need to be able to put another Chromebook lab in each of the elementary, the middle school, and the high school. Our teachers are really starting to embrace technology, and we find that it enhances our academic programs. Dr. Colley alluded at our last meeting to our writing program, K through four. We have little pockets, little bits and pieces, but pretty much teachers are really not following a necessary skill and sequence. So teachers are pretty much relying on the way they were taught writing, or the way they like to write themselves. And so we really don't have a definitive writing program. In the past, the district has invested in programs such as the Lucy-Caldens, but those are outdated. And so really, we need to look at our writing program. As we shared with you when we did the NCAS review, we had several of our youngsters who got a zero on a short answer response because out of a score of zero to two, they didn't write anything down. So that would be about $500 per teacher, but that would put the new writing program we were looking at, Write Traits, which really teaches tone, synergy, creative types of writing, in addition to conventions and grammar. So that would be about $16,000. We have put in a new math program, Go Math, from K through four. We have piloted it. Two teachers at the middle school were very interested, and of course, we want that K through six alignment much more. And so the teachers who are now piloting it, we actually have three teachers while we say it's in the two grades, Zulubera, Liz Texera, and Trish Piper are piloting it. And while, you know, they've worked out the bugs because there's too much materials, and so they're starting now to just learn the components of the program, feel it's worthwhile, so we would like a math program for grade five and six. Our sophomore reading, Basil, is over 10 years old at the elementary school. And while they're not called Basils anymore, some of us, I remember them, fun with Dick and Jane books, you know, there's a story, six or seven pages long, they discuss it, story of the week, and then they move on. We are trying to get our kids to now do much more guided reading, but there are times when we have certain skills that need to also be taught. So the anthology, we have a balance of nonfiction as well as fiction, but it comes with all the leveled readers, in addition to supporting it. We come with readers theater and stuff like that. So we would like to look for a reading program, new anthology, and that about $40,000. Mr. Simonello's remedial reading teacher, he estimated he's got about $15,000 that he can contribute towards, so $30,000 for that.
There were media math teachers.
Math teachers.
Math teacher, I'm sorry, math. And so as I said, Cheryl Dunn today, he emailed me and said she could use a math coach here. We have reading certified teachers both at the middle school and the high school, but there's very little math support for the kids that need that. And our school is district-wide, you know, certainly, we've got that. Something that I hear that keeps coming up is the district phone system. That's $46,000. And what I told is Mac no longer has working voicemail. The phone systems, we have four different, unique, distinct programs, so that they are not connected to one another. There is no caller ID, which potentially could be a safety issue. And the new, the new system would allow us to use the fiber pieces of the fiber booth. Then Mr. Simonello said, you know, while he knows that there is a cost, a heavy cost to this, the lockers at the middle school are really starting to show wear and tear. And so you've got a quote for just 32 lockers would be $7,680. Then in addition, just looking at some of the capital expenses, and as I said, just the parking lots over at the Mac and the parking lot here at the high school too as well. So, I mean, this list probably could have gone on and on even, but that's a shortlist of $200,000 references.
And is this list in what you feel is a priority?
It is a priority, yes.
No, in order?
No, in order.
It is in order of priority with the exception of the math coach. And I would probably put the math coach right up there with the remedial math teacher.
Can you explain the difference between a math coach and a math teacher?
Yeah, the math coach serves twofold. In addition to being certified to work with the students, a math coach actually goes into the classroom and supports the teacher. So let's just assume some of our elementary teachers, they teach math, but they might have only had one math course in their undergraduate degree. So by nature, many teachers love reading and literacy, so they may spend a lot more time on that. But as far as teaching mathematics, they might know only one way, one approach to teaching it. And if a youngster doesn't get it, sometimes they'll rely on another classmate perhaps. Can you say this a different way, or how might you do it? But a math coach, in addition to working with the students, actually goes into his professional development. They'll watch a teacher teach and then make some suggestions, or they'll model a lesson, and the teacher will watch that too as well.
Michael?
Hey, Dr. Dargan, I want to thank you for communicating with the principals throughout the system. To come up with a list of items, now is the time, whether it be for this upcoming special town meeting or our annual town meeting, to have communication beforehand in terms of identifying needs throughout the system. If we start with looking at our budget, which, our initial proposed budget, which was $650,000 more last year than what we ended up with, we're now, as it were, nose at level funding. We do need to look at that budget in terms of what items were within that $650,000 that were not, which were cut through the budget adjustments. And some of those appear to be in here. There's some new information that's come forward. The recent release of our MCAS assessment scores identified some major needs, and you've brought these into the new list. So although all of these items weren't on our previous operating budget for FY13, there's been newly identified priorities. I believe the, personally, on this list, and having reviewed the MCAS assessment scores, a new reading anthology program for grades K four, for the simple fact that it lines up with a national, if not statewide, priority to have 90-plus percent of third graders being at an appropriate reading level. Otherwise, they're high risk for high school dropout. I think we have to align with that initiative, starting with this program, and also reaching out for any other alternative funding. I think it's very important for us to partner with any grants that may be available, and I think the indication, if we bring in this anthology program, there may be some other supports available. A new reading anthology and the remedial math teacher for the middle school, the two items on this that are glaring in terms of the need. We came up with a budget that yielded a balanced budget, but it certainly didn't meet all our needs. So this list, as much as there were all true needs identified from the school level and the specialists, those two, for what it's worth, I identified, and given the list as the number two, one of two priorities.
Tony?
Anne, just, see if you can answer this one. How does a reading program become outdated? I don't mean like...
Culturally?
Yeah, yeah, I don't mean something, maybe a computer program, something, or some other computers that maybe doesn't run anymore, but I mean, the basics of a reading program, how does that, how does a program become...
Two things, the reading series that we currently have is not diverse. And so while Westport, we live in, you know, are primarily...
Okay, but having the first, yeah. Pilot books, whatever.
It's one of the ways that you evaluate curriculum.
How is that, how is having the first, you know, pilot book?
Well, that's not necessarily the mechanic, that's not, that's not the mechanics of the reading. What the mechanics piece of it, or how to improve our test scores, is 50% or more of what our kids now read should be nonfiction. And the anthology of Basil that we have, this enforcement for over 10 years now, is primarily fiction, you know, pieces of literature that really are fantasy, if not in the real world. And so because of the information age now being the way it is, the theory behind it is that much of what our kids are going to be assessed on is really nonfiction. And so we've got to expose our kids to nonfiction. And the anthology would be a balance of poetry, nonfiction, and fiction.
And this anthology, this is, is this a program or is this...
It would be very similar to the Basil that they have now, only it's updating it to something much more current, as well as they still would do their value reading. Because just like when we bought a math program for them, all the bells and whistles, you know, the CDs, the online passwords, the electronic version of the book, the teacher resources, the Black Line Masters, all of the enrichment, the differentiated instruction centers, all came along with that. And so really, what the teacher just now needs to do is concentrate on teaching, because all the materials are there. So the new reading anthology will come with, all the leveled readers, they'll come with all of the assessments. You know, right now, we're, you know, we're gibbling the kids, we get, the teachers would like some other assessments. This reading program, in addition to providing the necessary school comprehensive skill building, would provide all of the resources to the teacher to be able to just go and teach.
Are we putting too much faith in a program?
Well, we shouldn't...
And not enough faith in the teacher, the classroom?
We shouldn't base anything on a program because we have our Common Core state standards, that's really our curriculum. So any of the programs that we're purchasing are really enhancements. They're tools in order to help us reach our goal. But picture a young teacher, someone new to the profession, and pretty much, you know, the Common Core is just words on a piece of paper, they don't have, yes, experience. And so we're guiding them with some appropriate tools that are consistent. I just met with the third grade teachers yesterday, and we were looking at what are some realistic, common assessments? Because they have multiple materials and resources now in this math program. And so really trying to identify what's going to serve us, the teachers' needs, to give them the information so that they can go in and offer some kind of intervention. So a new reading program will be able to give them many more of those benchmarks, skill assessments, in addition to the reading content for the students.
But do these programs cause the teachers more work as far as...
In the beginning, yes, because in the beginning, it's just like even, you know, I don't know.
Because ultimately, whatever Johnny's reading, if it's fiction, nonfiction, if Johnny can't read, it doesn't matter what, we're throwing fun.
Absolutely right. However, it's going to give the teachers, we hear the term differential instruction all the time, which is just really tearing. And it's looking at, instead of one size fits all, it's now, what do we do with the kids who are on grade level? What do we do with the kids above grade level? And what do we do with the kids that need additional intervention? And the teachers right now are trying to create those activities, those instructional materials to use within for children. By buying programs that are already, the whole kit and caboodle is complete father. They just have to pull it up and they can concentrate.
And do we have any teachers in the system right now, or in the past few years or whatever, that were teaching to a common denominator that has...
One size fits all.
And that's, and that's fine?
No, it's not.
I know, I know, it's not fine, I'm saying, but that was a lot of, that's...
It's happened, it's not acceptable. And that's why we're really trying to give them the tools to make it easier for them, so that the teacher doesn't have to run around and read.
I mean, why would something like that, why would, why would a principal or anybody allow a teacher in his or her building to teach 25 kids?
That's not why we're here.
I know, but, is this going to make a difference? I, that's my point.
I believe so. I believe so.
Now, given some of the things that Anne has brought to us, there are other items as well that potentially you guys might think of. Is there any interest in adding a warrant item? And if there is, we also, I think, need to identify where it's going to be coming from. And if there is interest, what would it be for? So that's kind of the purpose of this meeting, to let you guys decide whether, whether you want to go back to the town in November and say, we'd like some money for X, Y, Z. Obviously, it's not limited to this stuff. I just asked Anne to put together, Alyssa, some of the things that she and Dr. Colley felt the district was in need of with most recently, and then all the stuff, obviously, that we cut as well. So...
I think the math at the fifth grade, you know, whether it's fifth and sixth or...
But what I'm asking, is there interest in, is there interest in adding, is there interest in going for money at the town meeting at this point?
Well, if we do that, maybe, maybe we can...
Carolyn?
Yes, I think, and my goal would be to put more resources in the classroom, which has been the focus, and I think that I would focus on maybe the math, because of the MCAS course that came down, possibly some of the positions that have been discussed. The technology is great, and I understand that it's necessary, but I think, for me, I think more people may be more beneficial. As far as the source of the funding, again, there was this additional funding that came down from the Stip House. Yes, we all know that it's one-time money, I get it, I understand that, but it is available to the town as a whole. And I think that the proposal of the Board of Selectmen to fund veterans and then fund the snow and ice, which has historically been funded at, I believe, 60-something thousand dollars. There's a reason for that, because you can shortchange snow and ice, you're allowed to by state law to do it. A lot of the towns do it. I know that there's this argument that it's not a physically prudent thing to do, because every year we spend more, et cetera, et cetera. But every year, the school gets less, and I think it's time that we go to the table and that we ask our town members to come to the floor and support their schools. And I would suggest that we request that instead of putting those monies in the snow and ice budget, that we spend those monies in for the schools.
Michael?
And I agree with Carolina, in particular, on the fact that there is more money that has come from the state. We do differ a bit on calling this one-time money. But hopefully, our economy will continue to grow as it is currently, and the state will be able to meet their responsibility for public education. If we look at the source of why these funds came into Westport, it's the formulas for education. There were some additional educational funds that, beyond our estimates, when we started our budget process. So we started our budget process anticipating X for the town as a whole, and more came in, partially due to some school funding that was issued on the budget. My estimation is we should look at where our needs are and ask the town to make sure we fund appropriately. Otherwise, as we talked about in our balancing the budget hearings, we're jeopardizing the future of all students, reading, math. We can get into prioritizing, but to answer the question that's on the table, yes, I believe we should be putting a warrant out, asking for some of the money, yes, other items like that.
Does anybody have anything that specific that they would like to motion for at this point?
The two top items that Dr. Dargan mentioned, the remedial math teacher coach and the program reading program.
What is the cost of a coach?
The coach for high school.
Equivalent to...
Two different math teachers.
Math, middle school math teacher.
The remedial math teacher.
Remedial math teacher. And a reading program from, what was it?
The reading anthology that they're favored for.
The anthology. That was a total of $70,000.
And I believe the monies that the town received is about $67,000 back from school? Is it, is it more?
I believe it's...
69, maybe? It's not, it's around 70. The monies that were reached, that were given or sent back to the town.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. You're saying the monies that last year were...
Out of that mon, no, 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 out of the money that went back to the town...
The free cash.
No, 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 this money now that went...
From the state.
Yeah, the money that came from the state.
$249, so...
But $67,000 was for education.
I think around 70,000 was, it's because of stuff from education. Don't quote me completely, I don't know, but I think that's around...
No, Michelle, the education stuff gets, isn't certified as free cash, that's separate, that's not part of that.
No, that's not what I'm talking about.
I was confused. Well, we also have about $60,000, $70,000 every year that gets returned through Medicaid, third-party billing, that we never get to return right back to the town budget, not to ours.
Right.
So Anne, do we, does that math teacher, does that need to be, how do we use the math teachers full-time?
Well, the middle school, Mr. Simonello, would like to use a, like, the reading teachers offering solely exclusively intervention. So any student that's born needs improvement or warnings along the MCAS would automatically be eligible for drug services.
So like maybe two fifth-grade classes, two sixth-grade classes?
No, no, it would, it could be potentially 50 children in the sixth grade, 50 children in the fifth grade, 70 children in the seventh grade, I'm making these numbers up right now. Any youngster that's in targeted, at risk for mathematics.
How do we work that into the current schedule right now?
He actually, the youngsters are getting their additional double dose for their reading support. Unfortunately, something has to go, so they're missing one of their exploratories. So they get one exploratory, the second exploratory, they would come up and they would have some...
When we say exploratory, you mean, in the likes of...
Art, music, chorus band.
So every day, every day right now, they have one exploratory or they have...
Every day, they have one exploratory. And so they would miss one of their exploratories, and it would probably be twice a week that they would miss it.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that.
They still would get, you know, some exploratory.
And would we be able to fit that into, be able to tweak that schedule? I mean, say this happens...
It's just a manner of...
But how soon would this happen, actually? Would it have to go, goes to town?
Town meeting would be November.
So there'd be no way, if it's approved, that's how many, the money's...
If there's money within our budget, we could hire immediately and just replace, I would tend to think.
Yeah, and well, also, I have posted in the past positions and setting anticipated, so that way you could start collecting resumes, you can actually, you can start your interview process. We just haven't promised anybody that it's a true position yet.
As soon as the money comes in, then...
Right, you're ready to vote.
Start tomorrow.
Well, I guess my point is, do we need it, in your opinion? Well, I guess my point is, do we need it, in your opinion, that person to be at full-time?
Correct. Given the needs are so great.
Indeed. MCAS scores and?
Oh, no, there's no doubt. There's no doubt. But again, that person would be used throughout the middle school, not just fifth and sixth.
Correct, throughout.
So the same, same model that we're doing with English language jobs?
Correct. So whenever youngsters are at seventh grade exploratory, that person would serve as seventh grade students. When eighth grade is in exploratory, they would work with the priority students, try to get to as many of them as we possibly can. But perhaps they would be able to do a math club or something like that after school too as well to reach more students.
We're looking for this number, this number. So is that a form of motion that you?
Yes.
So is there a second?
Start here for discussion.
Would you like to open discussion, Anne?
It sounded like you wanted to, by the way. Certainly, as I've stated earlier, I agree with those two pieces of identifying the immediate needs of the elementary, middle school. I am concerned about the overall approach that the Westport Community Schools, as a result, partially of our restriction on funding, is able to put together the educational programs. I think, as an example again, about potential for new funding, plugging a few areas of need. I think it's time that the school committee takes it upon themselves to evaluate the entire program of the Westport Community Schools, look at our achievement and assessment scores, get some assistance to evaluate and come up with recommendations, perhaps through a consultant, on revamping the way we are currently structured. I am speaking of building use as well as the total, as I said, the Westport Community Schools includes buildings, includes administration, staff. And I think we have to take a good look at our entire structure. And I think we would be facilitated with a consultant. If we started a study, earmark twenty thousand dollars to look at this whole picture. I know we have a district improvement plan in place. There were some changes based on our MCAS scores. It's very similar to the district improvement plans of the past three years. There's a few changes. The bottom line is it has not worked. To my personal objective of being in the top twenty-five percent assessments scores throughout the state, I'd like to see some help come in and figure out our strategic approach to reaching that goal. So if we could fund that through the surplus cash that has come down.
So, but you don't have anything on the particular motion on the table? That's?
I'm asking for an addendum to the motion.
Or a separate, or a separate one?
Where are we at in our five-year plan with the EPA on what we're going to be doing with our schools?
We need to still discuss that.
I think that he was getting at is that we need to find out, you know, what we're going to be doing with this district. We have no plan for five years.
Right. We have middle school on the, on the agenda on Wednesday.
And I appreciate your.
Like some of that funding might be available for the CIPC.
Right.
Well, I'm not looking at buildings only. I mentioned.
I don't even have time to talk about anything.
Curriculum as well.
Anything under the logo of Westport Community Schools. Buildings being a big part of it. Mission statement. The way we approach producing education for our students. And I think it's a good time, Anne, to identify an approach to that rather than reaction to, which, reaction is good. We're reacting to our assessment scores. But I think we need to have a longer, a long-term strategic plan study.
So given the motion that Eric put on the table, and Mike seconded to make a request at town meeting for the forty thousand dollars to fund the new reading anthology for grades K to four and the thirty thousand dollars for the remedial math teacher at the Westport Middle School. Is there any other discussion on this, on?
Right. My request is for an addendum, friendly addendum to that motion to add twenty thousand dollars for a long-term strategic plan.
Mike, I think that should, if we're going to do that.
Do it separately. We want to fail on one thing. One thing, I like to separate because if they say no to that, they're going to be saying no to our remedial and all that. You know? Put two articles out there.
Yeah. So do we need to come up with a?
The wording of it.
Funding?
Source.
Because, or is this something that we can just put out there?
Well, the source is the availability of the money that's coming in.
The source is that money that's coming in. So would this, would this require us to shift from, say, what the Board of Selectmen are recommending for certain things, or is this just putting in a request?
No, that money's on the table, basically asking to use.
We can vote on subject to, in other words, I don't think we have to vote on the actual word.
No, that's correct. I understand that. I'm just curious. I'm just discussing with the guys.
So my understanding of what would happen is you would have, and I don't know if you guys remember the discussion of the beach committee, you would have competing articles on the table, and the Board of Selectmen's article would say, we want X amount to go to veterans, and that would come up for a vote, and the town would either vote yes or no. If they voted yes, that money would be pulled aside, and it'd be pretty much a done deal. And let's say we've decided that we wanted go for the amount of snow and ice, which I'm still looking for, which I haven't been able to find. And that article comes up because it's first on the list, it's article whatever, ten, and ours becomes article thirty-two because we get it put at the end of it. And what we would be advocating would be that that article should fail. So, I mean, our messaging would be that we're seeking those funds to be for the town article for the school, and therefore, we would be voting, and I would get up and speak against it because I think those monies should go to the school as opposed to snow and ice. And so then that would get eventually voted, and if it got voted down, those monies would now be freed up to go to somewhere else. And it doesn't necessarily go to the school. It's just not been allocated to what that article called for. And so then somewhere down the line, and this would be in the best of all possible scenarios for the school, since this is what, if we decide to propose, we're proposing, our article comes up. And then there are the people that are going to vote, speak against it, and then we're going to speak for it, I'm assuming. Then we would say, this is the reason, this is why we're proposing. And what is your source of funding? And our source of funding would be the monies, you know, that are left from blah, blah, blah. Okay? At any point in time, other people can later on raise to recall articles and so, I mean, it could be a very long, convoluted process. But my understanding, my basic understanding of that, the way the process would work is you submit an article, and then you have to basically say, where should the monies come from? And if there are monies that have not been allocated because an article failed, my understanding is those monies are now available to theoretically fund something else. We also, one of the reasons I believe we're here today is that this has to go in front of the Finance Committee, which we would have to get on the agenda for the ninth if we approve this. I don't know that we'll have the exact wording. We're going to have to work with council to get that wording and what the amounts are. And then the Finance Committee would deliberate and determine whether they vote in favor, whether they don't, or whether they're going to hold off till town meeting, which they do on occasion. And then we would go to town meeting with either the Board of, I mean, and the Board of Selectmen, I guess. I'm guessing they're going to vote against it because they've already determined what they want to do with the monies. And the school is a part of what they want to do with the monies. So we would have to see whether the Finance Committee is on board with this or not. There are some members of the Finance Committee that believe, in my opinion, from what I've heard them discuss, that the schools are not getting the funding that they should be getting. So there may be people there that would speak in favor of this. I don't know. There's what? I don't know how that vote would come up. But the ultimate decision maker would be the town members that would vote at town meeting floor. But we would have to, at a certain point in time, identify the source of funds. And my recommendation at this point is that funding snow and ice is probably, in my opinion, that can wait one more year. What the heck? We waited eighteen, hundred years already.
We can't just, we can't just define source of funding as this?
Taxation. Source of funding would be taxation. There's a surplus funds coming from taxation now. So we're identifying that we want it to come from taxation.
Okay, okay.
If I can just add one point, I don't know that we have an opportunity to go directly to the Finance Committee. The town warrant that's delivered to the Finance Committee has been approved beforehand by the Board of Selectmen. That's typically the way it goes. And then the Finance Committee votes up or down on each particular warrant article. Sure, I think the Finance Committee could take it under advisement, but it's still, in order to be published on the warrant, it has to be accepted by the Board of Selectmen, if it's coming from any department. I'm not sure, because we're not a department.
Which is what they were doing, well, they were doing that on Monday night. They were taking in some articles.
Keep in mind, our budget that we wanted to put before the town meeting, we were never allowed to.
Right.
We had to come down to another one that wasn't accepted. But, so I'm not sure.
It's not that we weren't allowed, we caved.
We caved.
Not that we weren't allowed.
But my, my understanding is that anybody can put an article on the town meeting warrant. You just need, what, three? I don't know what the magic number is.
It's.
And so I don't believe that the school committee has any less ability to put an article. That we may not get the BOS's blessing, that's a different story, and I'm willing to fight that battle. I have no concerns about that. I think we are, as a school committee, able to put it on. I don't think we need their permission or approval. And I do think that Tony's statement that we could have gone to town meeting floor and said, yes, this is what's on the article, but we're seeking that this amount be increased to blah, 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 and these are the reasons why. And we chose not to fight that battle because we were trying to present a unified phase, because we were thinking that we would be able to do the overrides and help the entire town as a whole, the town side, school side, the town period. We're one town. We're not separated towns. But, you know, that didn't work out.
The moderator would be the one that?
That didn't work out. But it has to, it has to go. It has to be presented, and it has to be published in time. So we need to make sure that we make whatever those deadlines are.
Which is the ninth?
The ninth is for presentation to the Finance Committee. I don't know what the specific, I believe Dr. Colley at some point sent us, sent us an email giving us those deadlines, because I saw it earlier today, and I'd have to pull it up. But I think that there are certain deadlines that we just need to be informed of as to making sure that we make it for print. And what we need to do to make sure we get on town. No, it wasn't today. This was, this was some time ago.
This was maybe two, so.
Right. That gave us the heads up about the October ninth deadline and all this other, I believe there were other deadlines included in that.
So.
I started having the numbers set.
So based on Eric's motion, my second, all those in favor of adding request for the seventy thousand dollars at town meeting for the anthology and the teacher at the middle school? Yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you need to go ahead with that?
Just the notes probably have that we did identify from taxation, and I think that's.
Yes.
Yeah, but same taxation, would that mean an older one?
No, no.
Because the font is still there.
Yes.
Yes. Because they're not free cashed or anything. They're, okay, so, Michael?
Well, they'll, if it's not, they'll tell us.
Can I ask for some clarification? And I apologize because I'm not very sophisticated when it comes to all of these terminologies. Well, is taxation what we generate from real estate and that, and this is different because it comes from the state legislature? Is that called something different than taxation? I'm asking.
I don't think so.
Can we just?
It's just available cash. It's, that cash is on the table.
Can we just make our motion so that it includes whatever we all understand that part of money is, whatever it may be called?
Well, the motion didn't include.
It didn't include taxation. That's in my notes so that it's just.
Okay, that's fine.
So that we put the wording down.
So we'll put it on the appropriate place.
They'll tell us.
Fund, because I don't, I don't want to put it down and then we got the wrong name.
It wasn't in the motion.
Okay, that's fine.
It was just in the discussion.
Right, and the total was seventy thousand.
Which is the total of the forty and the thirty. Michael had said this to me earlier. This is something that he was thinking about, I guess, and?
In general, a long-term issue over the past years has been the reoccurring concern for adequately funding the special education. You want to be able to forecast what your special education costs are going to be, if as the year goes on, you're under your forecast, as we've, this year adjusted it down to two hundred thousand dollars, you're in jeopardy of having to take funds from other areas within your budget. One solution to this has been brought up to us in the past for developing a special education reserve account. And so this article that I'm suggesting authorizes the town treasurer to set up a reserve account. It's a non-financial article. And I'll read it. Appropriations Special Education Reserve Account to see if the town will vote to transfer FY13 unspent special education funds to a special education reserve account to be established by the town treasurer or take any action relative thereto. My concern, so that's the warrant article. What this does is creates an account without any money in. Now, we might have to check with town council. They may say, we should put a dollar in here or something. But my concern is, as we get to the end of our FY13, if we have a surplus of funds in our special education funds, rather than spending it on other areas, in other words, rather than doing transfers and spending it on other areas, I'd rather put it in the treasury and carry it over. We've talked about in the past how we approach prepaid tuition, for instance. That's one way to carry it. There's a lot of limitations on what we're able to do. If we're able to establish a special education reserve account, it would relieve some of the extenuating circumstances of having a new enrollment that costs us money, we'd have some money backed up to sustain the budget.
Mike, you touched on, right now, Anne, when we have the surplus in the state account, so in the year, it's fifty thousand dollars. Typically, we transfer that money out of state, and then we decide what we do. So this, the play that was advocated here, somebody wants to stop us from transferring money into special ed just to save, you know, I would imagine they would want some, some limits or, sorry, how would you deal with that?
The unspent, unspent special ed funds.
Can only be spent on special education. And so looking at circuit breaker, reinforcements, et cetera. It's interesting, because when I first became aware of this today, the town of Arlington actually did something like this in the spring. And they made a motion in the spring to move to the FinCom, five hundred thousand dollars in the fiscal year twelve, unspent special education funds to transfer into a special ed reserve account. So I did speak with Andy Law today on how the best, if this came up to mind, what the best recommendation would be. And since right now it's an unknown dollar amount, we have no idea for FY13 what's unspent yet. Two things actually have to happen. The first thing is, is you have to ask the town, and Andy says, assuming the town will approve it. Because anytime you set up a new revolving account, it has to go through the town permission has to be granted. So he said, first you have to establish the revolving account. And then at that point in time, once you've got the account established, then you can request in the spring. So Andy's recommendation is, we keep this on the table, keep the discussion going, and go in the spring for town meeting and ask to set up the revolving account. Thus in turn, in June, you can make this motion and recommendation moving forward. But it does have, it has a lot of narrative practice.
Because the reason I thought it made sense now is so that in the spring, if we... The reason I thought it made sense now is so that in the spring, if we... The first step is to set up the account.
So that's what you could be asking for at this town meeting?
That's what I was hoping to do this time, and then we would have to go back and explain the transfer, or would it just, it would be our...
No, you then have to request that the money be transferred in.
So we'd still have to go back to town meeting.
Still not go back to them and ask them to...
Say, okay, we got $200,000, we want...
It would be another warrant article.
Transportation, qualified special ed transportation, qualified that?
Special ed transportation.
Okay.
Carolina?
What's the mechanism for getting the money out? Do you have to go to town meeting to get the money out?
Revolving account.
It's a revolving account, so it's just every three years, I guess, before town meeting in order to be approved to keep your revolving account going.
But the following...
You better go in and take that one out. Just a revolving account that you have for...
Every one of our revolving accounts have had to go through this similar setup.
And the limitations of prepaid tuition do not apply to this?
You can still pay your tuition.
That's not right. The question is that we're limited to how much prepaid tuition we can set aside every year and carry forward. So this would, but this, these funds could only be used for special education, and they could be pulled out at any time?
By us, for special education. So it's your insurance that if that $100,000 student comes in, you have accessibility rather than have to then go back to town for a special town meeting for the funds.
And so let's say this happens, and you put a hundred the first year, and a second year, two hundred, third year, another hundred, so say in three years you have $400,000 in there, and we're not using it, so...
And we take it in three years.
So at that point, what do you do? You underfund the Fed budget so that you use it?
You try to spend it. I mean, you really shouldn't have that much money in a revolving account to begin with anything.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, but don't you want to say?
When you need it.
They don't say, you know, they, guys, it's like a savings account.
Correct.
You know, looking at our budget this year, because we pared down $200,000 from a line item for special ed, I don't anticipate a surplus at all. So I really think we're looking at, if we end up with $25,000 now...
Like $1.
Twenty-five thousand dollars, that's a seed into the account. And as that grows every year, then if we have, three years from now, we're short 50, we don't have to go to a special town meeting like we did three years ago. So it, the idea came up because it's been discussed as a possible option. The framework, the town of Arlington seems to have done a whole new mechanism.
Yeah, I just, this is the first I've heard of this, and I think personally preferred to wait and discuss this more in depth and do it at the regular town meeting where we would be able to, and then at that point, we would have a much more specific sense of what, if any, monies we could fund that first revolving account with, which seems to be what they did. I just, I don't know enough about this to feel comfortable voting to move forward on it, that's just my personal opinion.
Well, my concern is what you said quickly, that was sort of brushed over, that's it. After that, three years, if we have money in there and the town's deciding, you know, like the schools very much that particular year, for whatever reason, how...
Well, the purpose really isn't supposed to be a savings account, it's not...
I understand that, but...
So if in three years you haven't spent $300,000, then what do you really need that money for?
So now, what would the money be used for as, on a yearly basis? Are we just talking about paying for the students that come in by surprise, or are we talking about...
You're much more broad-based then, so I'll give you an example. In my last study, we had an extended day care program which brought in an awful lot of money. In fact, in that revolving account, when I left, there were $200,000 in it. But I didn't have to solely use that money exclusively for extended day. We could use it for any of the building repairs in any of the buildings that that extended day program was housed in too as well. You could use it for materials and supplies, so we needed to have a new playground put in as a reducing it. So special education...
So even if they needed some new something in their classrooms, it could be used for that as well?
Century Garden or Swing.
Yes, and it depends on how you lay to that revolving account. So with Arlington, they called it the Special Education Reserve Account, which I believe is exactly what Mr. Sullivan had said, so broad-based.
I don't see any harm in setting it up. Maybe we never even put money in there, or we decide, we don't do it, or whatever. I don't see the harm in...
Well, I like this.
It doesn't cost anyone any money, so it's...
I like the fact that you can use it for other things too, you know, not just, yeah, not just for either tuition or whatever it can be, for things that we would need in the district and things that our students are needing, you know, whatever.
So Andy's recommendation was that you wait till the spring and that you ask them to set up the, establish the revolving account, and then ultimately you'll know in June how much money...
Ask them now to establish it?
You could, I mean, you're working under the gun. He suggested in the spring.
That's my concern, is the spring is June, that's our spring town meeting?
But you still wouldn't know how much you have until you close out and certify your budget.
Right, I know the capital revolving account, they set up the account as the first meeting so that when they went back to try to fund it, which they were successful this year in putting some funds into it, but they had to separate from the time they set up the Once that was authorized, then they could forecase what...
So you can't, you can't set up and fund at the same time?
It makes it more difficult. That's my concern about this one.
Favorite piece of setting, where does the money go while you're waiting for it?
And then my only other concern is that I don't want to add confusion to the schools are there asking for something. And unless you're very clear, and again, I feign, I claim ignorance, I'm not up on this, it may be very readily explained, but it's something else that we're going to have to educate town meeting floor about, and it's sort of, oh, there they are again, asking for something else, and we're not asking for anything, but that's not the way it gets painted. And so if we focus on trying to get some resources back into the classroom with some of those monies that came back, to extra monies that came into the town from the state, and hold off on this until the next town meeting, I think then we can divert all of our energies to try and make sure that we educate people as to exactly what we're asking for and why on that one article, as opposed to having to spend resources on educating people on two articles. That's just my opinion.
I will add to Michael's thing here, that I did have a phone conversation with Dr. Colley last night, and you had sent the email, and I forwarded, I don't remember if you CC'd him or I forwarded it to him. He actually said, ultimately, it is a good idea, and his only concern was going back to the town, which he thought was going to be yearly, now you're telling me it's every three years, because you could potentially...
That was a late...
Yeah, you could potentially lose that money. And his only question was, well, where is, talking about the money coming from? That was a question that you answered. So just so, you know, I did speak with him last night, and he actually said, you know, a fund like this can be helpful, and it is a good thing to have. But again, you're fighting, you're potentially fighting every couple of years to make sure you keep that money. But that's a choice, I guess, we make.
But to sell on something that's there, we're not, it's not, keep that fund going, should it get established, I don't think would be an issue for anybody, because we're not asking for more money, we're just saying, hey, we have this account, we just want to keep it going, you know, we're not asking for it.
Um, Mike, are you making the motion to this for...
Want to wait or do it? I'd like to make the motion to establish the, make a motion to prepare a warrant, hold it on to the appropriate...
Prepare a warrant?
Well, what was the opening of?
She has it in front of her.
What was the, no, what was the, the previous motion? Whatever instruction we used for that, because it's a...
I'm basically requesting, maybe renal, math, teacher, reading, anthology.
Requesting to submit an article for...
Okay, so, so re-put?
$70,000 as a warrant article.
Okay, so in this case, the motion is to...
As a warrant article?
Prepare a warrant article, asking to establish an educational reserve account, a special education reserve account.
Is there a second?
With language as submitted, or you can reference this language.
You want me to add that language to this?
Or appropriate per legal counsel.
Is there a second? Discussion?
I just want to, again, I would prefer to wait till April. I feel completely unprepared. I think there's a lot, in my mind, there's some more discussion that needs to take place, and I need more information to feel comfortable about the ins and outs of this. I'm not saying that I object to the, what seem to be good merits of it, I just think that in light of the first article that we just put on, this is just going to potentially create confusion, and I don't have enough information to go further on. It's just my...
Yeah, I think in lieu of the other article that we, the one that we wanted to put on, maybe it's best we wait till the spring.
Well, this is a non-financial article, which will assist in our spring budget cycle. Without it, we once again have surplus, we have to return the surplus. The first step, as you know, with the capital revolving account, was to set up the account. Town meeting warrant articles, the non-financial, usually get a better understanding, it's the mechanics of budgeting. This fund was not born from my own research, this came about from discussions over the past four years on the problem with funding special education and appropriately anticipating what we need. This gives some insurance to it. This fund was, the idea came from Dr. Colley's suggestions in the past, and every year we ask, can we take our surplus funds and put it in a reserve account? And we're told we can't do it. The reason we can't do it is because we didn't set up the account. This has become the approach that's acceptable in Massachusetts, and otherwise, we're going to continue to have the same burdens come budget cycle as we did in the past years.
Well, we usually ask Dr. Colley what his opinion of it is. Dr. Darden, what's your thought process on this?
I actually, I asked Andy, and Andy's opinion was wait till the spring, but I do understand that Mr. Sullivan is coming, there's no harm in getting the revolving account established. However, is that then going to deter from the mindset of the town meeting members who are going to say, you're asking for money, but you're already anticipating savings to put into a savings account? That's what I would be, you know, a little bit afraid of. Andy seemed to believe you could do both in the spring.
Establish the account and transfer.
When you've identified a certain amount of money, establish it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm inclined to keep it super simple.
Question for a certain amount of money.
Mike, if you, there's no harm, I don't think there's any harm in waiting.
We can still vote on it. We just don't know.
If you don't...
Well, we just invented to make it the spring, we just, one must...
This, that was the appropriate time, after looking at the framework of how we'd have done revolving accounts, is to set up the account. The Beach Committee, the Capital Committee, the first thing they do is set up the accounts. The reason is...
What is the Beach Committee? That's what, I'm just picturing what Carolina said, I remember the Beach Committee town floor was outrageous.
Yeah, it's a little bit different, but the, they had unanimous support, though.
Yes.
And the outrage was with the, with our leaders who were reluctant to allow...
Set up the account.
Set up the account.
Yeah, I mean, they're saying, setting up the account.
Yeah, it's different.
I think the town would listen, but I think the people on the stage would sit there and say, it's like what Dr. Darden said, you're asking for money, but you want to set up an account, hide stuff. That's a tough one.
Well, you always ask for money in the, in the spring town meeting, so I don't, you know, you're going to be asking for a lot more in the spring than you are now. You're asking for $70,000 now. I don't anticipate any problems from the town of Westport voters to fund $70,000 that we, as a school committee, is saying we need. So first of all, let's not be overly pessimistic about our town voters at town meetings saying yes to $70,000. We've cut our budget $650,000, we've now come up with two programs we need to increase our educational attainments. I don't see that as a problem. So to set up this account is really separate, and it's a, it's the mechanics that we've been asked for for three years.
And we have been, we have been talking this for a while.
Let us stop kicking the can.
This is a hard one.
We're kicking the can down the road. We've been said, told every year come budget cycle, well, if we could put this excess money into an account, it would be much better off. So I put before you the mechanics of doing that.
No, and I don't think anybody's saying, I think we're all saying it's a very good idea, I think, but there's also good points as to the appropriate timing. It's a very hard one.
Nothing to do with the right time, you're...
No.
Nothing to do with the right time in life, so...
That's true. All right, Mike's motion is to vote to add a warrant article for the creation of, or the establishment of a special education reserve account. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? No. I voted yes. And I think that we just made very clear on town meeting floor why.
And listen, can we back track just a little bit on the other motion that we had? We also make it known that the principal of the middle school has $10,000, we have our own skin in the game also, he's putting up $10,000 of his money to cover that teacher also.
To help cover the cost.
It's our presentation.
Yeah.
It's stated in the... Okay. I thought we were talking about this on the floor before. We have skin in the game also.
Right. Is there anything else that anybody else would like to talk about, or we could...
A favor is one.
From zero?
Double up paying.
We're 100% increases.
100% increases.
We're taking a pay cut. We're going to start paying. We're going to pay.
I didn't. We're going to check out for the buses.
Yeah. That, is that it?
Yeah, well...
Do you want to go for that?
Pardon.
Do you comment the statement from Puddle?
I talked to Michael R. Sullivan.
R. Michael.
R. Michael.
R. Michael Sullivan.
Sullivan.
It's R.
And he did meet with someone from the...
Yeah, he was standing out there.
The DOT or Mass Highway, whatever, about the intersection on 88 Road County.
So Westport resident?
And apparently, they, I guess they increased the time for the line.
Well, they identified, they identified something too, there was maybe a timing.
Yeah, so they did tweak it a little bit, so it should help.
They said, I guess the timing is supposed to be set as 17 seconds, and it was consistently 17, but during a high traffic period, it's supposed to be 22. It wasn't, it was consistently 17 as well.
Are there sensors?
Yeah.
There are, and the sensors are supposed to trigger the high traffic, which would move it from 17 to 22.
So can we just park the car there all day?
Well, it goes to the floor. Anyway, we just, we want to thank Mike for actually standing out there counting cars and...
He stood out there for two mornings.
Putting his life on the line, standing in traffic.
For two mornings, he stood out there counting cars for half an hour.
Roses.
Thursday and Friday down on 88. Oh, yeah. And then he was out there a third day with the guy from the Mass...
He's a good example of cooperation.
Yeah, so, we're working on that, I know people are frustrated, so that's it then? Is there a motion to adjourn? A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Jim and Sid, I wish I...
I'm sorry, that's because I'm cold, I'm frozen.
I didn't get here exactly a lot.